Can everybody hear me?
Okay, Mike, it's four o'clock. I think that if you're ready to start, we can start.
Alex, do you want to wait a little longer? It's four o'clock. Do you want to start?
I had to unmute. Let me, let's check with Sonia first. Sonia?
We have a little bit of a feedback issue, but we can't seem to resolve that.
Some technical difficulties, so we may need a few minutes more.
Sure.
I don't think it's something that we're going to be able to resolve at this point. We'll keep on checking as the meeting is going along. Um, Alex, I don't think it's something that we could fix at this point. We'll have to just keep on trying as the meeting is going along. We'll get Cory on the line and see if he can help us. Please call Cory.
Okay, so I'm, I did, testing, we just proceed at this point?
I'm sorry. What did you say?
What did you say?
So should we just go ahead at this point?
Yeah, I think we can, and we'll have IT work on it in the background.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mayor, we're, we're all set.
Okay, well, thank you. Well, welcome to the council meeting this afternoon of July 1st, 2020, starting at 4:00 PM. And at this time, I would like to call the January 1st meeting of the City Council to order. And Chief, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Of course, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible.
Thank you. And roll call, Director Maloney?
Maria? Johnson Santos?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Valalta?
Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of Approval of Agenda. Staff is requesting an item be added to the agenda regarding coronavirus relief funding. Note that there is an immediate need to take action. The need arose after the posting of the agenda, and the action needs to be taken and submitted no later than July 10th, 2020, which will be before our next council meeting. So there is an urgency for us to approve the City Council resolution. Now, the action motion needed to add the emergency item to the agenda, it is City Council Resolution Number 6235, Designating the City Manager to Execute the Certification for Receipt of Funds Pursuant to Paragraphes 2 or 3 of Subdivision D of Control Section 11.90 of the Budget Act of 2020 for the Purpose of Obtaining the City's Allocation of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And we need, it has to be a two-thirds majority of the members present. So in this case, I guess we would need all four of us to approve it. And the action is to approve the agenda. After we approve this, if this is approved, then the next action will be to approve the agenda as amended with the addition of City Council Resolution Number 6235 as stated. So before we go on, is there any discussion about City Council Resolution adding it to the Agenda 6235? And again, I will do a roll call. Mr. Free is not here. Johnson Santos, any comments?
No comments.
Thank you. Mr. Jones?
No comments.
Thank you. Mrs. Lewis?
No comments.
And I have no comments. So do I have a motion to approve City, or excuse me, do I have a motion to add 6235 to the Agenda?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Lewis, and I would like to make a motion to add Resolution Number 6235 as read by title to the Agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that move.
Okay, it's been motioned by Lewis, second by Santos, for the adding of 6235 to the Agenda. Roll call vote. Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Valal, or excuse me, Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Motion carries. Now, do I have a motion to approve the Agenda as stated with the addition of 6235?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Lewis. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Agenda as submitted with the addition of Resolution Number 6235 as read by title.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that move.
It's been motioned, thank you. It's been motioned by Lewis, second by Santos, for the approval of the Agenda with the addition of 6235. And if, if no one has any, any problems with this, and we can pull it anyplace, if anyone wants, wants to go over a, an explanation, I can add it to 6B of the Consent Agenda, and then it can be pulled from the Consent Agenda if any council member wants to, wants to review it before it is approved. Does anyone have an objection to that? Okay, thank you. So that, that is where I'm going to place it. So we have a motion by Lewis, second by Santos, to approve the Agenda. And Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Okay, Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Motion carries. Okay, let's go on to public forum. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes Agenda and Non-Agenda Items. No action will be taken on Non-Agenda Items, and speakers are limited, may submit their comments by submitting a written statement limited to 250 words or less, or by dropping it off in the utility payment box at City Hall at 520 J Street by mail, or emailing cityclerk@lostbanners.org. Comments received will be read into the record during the City Council meeting. And Director Maloney, do we have any comments?
I have, um, two email comments. One is COVID-related and one is not.
Okay, then let's take the, the one that is not related to COVID.
Okay, um, hello. Here is my public comment for tomorrow's meeting. I also attached a photo. It can be shared with the council during public comment. That would be great. Good evening, Los Banners City Council. My name is Stephanie Gonzalez, and I work at the California Health Collaborative with the Merced County Tobacco Control Program. Our goal is to create safe and tobacco-free environments for youth in Merced County. Tobacco litter can be found in many outdoor environments, such as trails, parks, and restaurant patios. Littered cigarette butts, bleach toxins, chemicals such as arsenic used to kill rats, and lead, which can contaminate our water, soil, and air. Children love playing in the parks, and when cigarette butts are littered in the playground or youth-friendly areas, it makes it a dangerous place for them. Our program provides education about secondhand smoke, and we recently hosted a shoebox challenge where Merced County residents had to create a diorama where they created a scenery that depicts how tobacco litter and secondhand smoke impacts our environment. I would like to highlight our first-place winner, Joslyn Gomez, who is a six-year-old girl from Los Banners, who is concerned about how secondhand smoke and tobacco litter impacts our environment. She created a beautiful scenery of birds and a river, which unfortunately is filled with littered cigarettes, including the bird's nest. She won a $30 gift card to a local restaurant in Los Banners, and we are so proud of her. We would appreciate it if you can share the winning picture with your network. Please follow us on Facebook and Instagram at MCTCP209 for more information about our campaign. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you, Stephanie Gonzalez. And that's all I have.
Are we able to share that picture right now?
No, we are not.
Okay, so the next council meeting, could we please arrange, if we're going to be virtual at the next meeting, if we can arrange to, to share that picture in a slide? And also, if someone would contact Stephanie Gonzalez, and I can prepare a certificate of appreciation for the, the young lady's efforts in winning the prize. If someone would pass that on, I'd greatly appreciate it. Okay?
Okay.
All right. Okay, let's go on. So there are no other public comments, is that correct?
Just the COVID comment regarding now.
Anyone watching who would like to make a comment? See the Todd Brothers. Okay, they're shaking their head, no. All right, so I will now close the public forum and go on to Item 6, Consideration of Approval of Consent Agenda. Items on the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion, unless removed from the Consent Agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have, I'll just read them off, check register number 222571 and 222770 in the amount of 1,802,286 cents. And also B, City Council Resolution Number 6235 Designating the City Manager to Execute the Certification for Receipt of Funds Pursuant to Paragraphes 2 or 3 of Subdivision D of the Control Section 1190 of the Budget Act of 2020 for the Purpose of Obtaining the City's Allocation of the Coronavirus Relief Fund. And is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion A or B? Not hearing any, I will ask for a motion for the approval of the Consent Agenda.
Mayor, I'll make that motion.
Before we move forward, I couldn't get my mic unmuted.
All right.
So I, I just, on the coronavirus, um, I'm sorry, um, the coronavirus one.
Yeah.
I've spoken with our City Manager in regards to that, and I didn't see anything outlined as to what that money needed to be spent on, so he said that he would give some comment to council as to where we are in that stage right now.
Fantastic. Okay, Alex?
Sure. Thank you, Councilmember Lewis and Mayor. So the, the primary reason for adding this item as, as an emergency item was we just received information from the state of California as a result of the state just adopting their budget that this funding is available. The staff is in the process of reviewing the criteria and the eligible expenses for this funding, and so we have not concluded that review yet. So once we conclude that review, we will develop a list of recommended expenditures, excuse me, for that funding, and we will bring that, that list of recommendations back to you as the City Council for your consideration. So we don't have a list of those expenditures at this point, but we will develop one, and we will bring it to you for your consideration at some point in the very near future.
So this is just to get the money?
This is authorization to submit the form to, to ensure the city's eligibility for the funding. Yes, Mayor.
And that's what, $500,000?
It's a little over $500,000, yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, that's the point that I, I wanted the City Manager to bring to the council in public, so that everyone understood that we're just in the application process and that nothing's been developed at this point as to how that money is going to be spent. So once that happens, I'm sure that staff will be bringing back a report to council on how that money is to be spent, that will be received. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
So in a related/unrelated situation, the governor, I spoke to one of the supervisors this morning, and I'm not sure if the governor has approved yet or not, but there's $28 million in the pipeline from Merced County. And so when that money is received, then, then we can, I'm hoping there'll be some funds for each of the cities, the six cities and the county, with the sharing of that $28 million after the expenses are covered for the, the coronavirus pandemic that the county has, has laid out in, in the last few months. So we'll keep you updated on to see if they receive that $28 million or not. And that would be addition, if anything, it'd be in addition to this 500, over $500,000. Okay, any other comments on that? All right, so, Mrs. Santos, does your motion still stand?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as stated.
Okay, and do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis.
Okay, thank you. It's been motioned by Santos, second by Lewis, for the approval of the Consent Agenda as stated with the addition of 6235. And I'll go through the, the roll call again. Johnson Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes. Motion carries. Hey, let's go on to a public hearing. If you challenge a proposed action described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Item 7A, Public Hearings, to receive public comment and consideration of the repealing local amendment, amendments, Section 8-1.18A and Section 8-1.18B of the Los Banners Municipal Code related to water heater prohibited locations and water heater protection from damage. That's a mouthful. Okay, and 7A1, Ordinance Number 1086, and this is a first reading and introduction, by the way, repealing previously enacted local amendment to the California Plumbing Code as it pertains to water heaters. And we're going to go to Chief Hurley?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you for the introduction. Yes, and yes, it was a mouthful. So what we're doing tonight is just a little bit of housework cleanup regarding some of our amendments and dealing with the Building Code, Plumbing Code. It was brought to our attention that the current amendments to the Plumbing Code were, were no longer needed because of the changes in the Plumbing Code regarding water heaters. So I'm bringing you an ordinance amendment and a removal of Amendment Number 504.13, which is Water Heater Prohibited Locations in the California Plumbing Code 2019 Edition, and also Amendment, removal of Amendment Number 507.131, Water Heater Protection from Damage, also in the California Plumbing Code 2019 Edition. Why are we, why are we doing here, why are we here today to talk about this? As always, the City of Los Banners Fire Department and Building Department are dedicated to the safety and well-being of our, of all of our residents in the city. Currently, there is a City Code Amendment requiring residential water heaters to be placed in an exterior enclosed closet, not placed inside attached garages. This was amended many years ago due to the fact that the gas-fired water heaters are probably one of the most dangerous appliances in a, in a residential home. As it stated many years ago, there were multiple safety issues and hazards associated with water heaters installed inside attached garages. And at the time, it was decided that removing water heaters from garages completely would eliminate a lot of the hazards caused by water heater failures. With recent advances, there are revisions in current Plumbing Code, and that water heaters now being manufactured with multiple safety factors included, as well as the, as popular, the safer tankless water heaters, staff feels it is time to revisit this code amendment and eliminate the requirement to place the water heaters in an exterior closet, or even on the exterior of the home. A staff feels that the current Plumbing Code addresses all the safety concerns and installation requirements, so providing any additional city amendment would not be necessary. Uh, I talked about the water heaters and how they're manufactured. Water heater manufacturers are now required by law to modify the design of the standard water heater. One design change altered the pathway of combustion air into the burner compartment to improve the combustion safely. A flame arrestor plate was, was added, which helps prevent a burner rollout. They'll make the flame rollout safety device is now required, which will automatically shut off the water heater if flames escape of certain boundaries. And along with these safety improvements, has been a declaration of a sealed burner compartment, which makes relighting the pilot a little more challenging, but it is easier. It, it does make it easier with the, what's called a PISO igniter, like you may see on a barbecue. And these are safety devices that were installed, and are now in all water heaters, tankless and tanks water heaters that are, are being installed. So the Section 504.1 of California Plumbing Code, in our amendment stated that no water heaters, which depends on, which depends on the construction of combustion of fuel for heat shall be installed in any room designed to be used for sleeping purposes or in any garage, bathroom, or closed closet, or in any closet or confined space opening in, in any bed or bathroom. So this has changed a little bit. They put some requirements that are being looked at during the inspection and the permit process, which allows a water heater's installation in the bedroom, garages, bathrooms, and shall comply with the following. Fuel-burning water heaters shall be permitted to be installed in, in these locations as long as they are, they meet the current code, which includes a listed gasket door, approved self-closing devices, installed with a threshold, bottom door steel, and shall meet the list requirements of the code. And like I said, this is all part of the inspection process and why we require permits for water heaters. Moving into Section 507 is one another reason why we really wanted the water heaters to be out, outside or exterior access for protection of damage. Water heaters generating a glow, spark, or flame capable of igniting flammable vapors may be installed in residential garages constructed on or before August 4th, 1973. So what that says was water heaters before 1973 were allowed to be put in garages, but they had to be placed 18 inches above the floor. So that brought the igniter, the flame, above a level where it was safer, so they could be stored in there. Where water heaters installed in a separate proof compartment having access. Is there a question, or am I echoing?
I think you're echoing.
Somebody needs to mute their microphone. If you don't have a speaking role, can you please mute your microphone? Somebody needs to mute their microphone. If you don't have a speaking role.
So we, we talked about the 18 inches above, above the floor. So current water heaters that were installed in there prior to 1973, they were allowed to be in there, but they required to be 18 inches above. Water heaters installed in areas where they may be subject to mechanical damage shall be suitably guarded against such damage by being installed behind adequate barriers or being elevated in a location above the normal path of a vehicle in the garage. So Section 50713 now states that they can, these water heaters can be placed in garages because of the, the changes that were done in the manufacturing of the water heaters. It also has changed the, the previous code before. The new code basically states what, what I, what I stated earlier, what our amendment was. It deals with installation of garage, dealing with the above 18, the flame above 18 inches. It discusses the physical damage to protecting the water heaters from vehicles. Basically, it states appliances installed in garages, warehouses, or other areas subject to mechanical damage shall be guarded against such damage by being installed behind protective barriers or by being elevated or located out of the normal path of vehicles. It also talks about, in the new code, and the new code is the access from the outside. Where appliances are installed in a separate enclosed space having access only from the outside of a garage, such appliances shall be permitted to be installed at the floor level, providing the required combustion air is taken from the exterior of the garage. So but in conclusion, the amendments the city required many years ago provided an extra, provided an extra layer of safety for residents within the city. But due to the advances in, in the product design and the current Plumbing Code requirements, these amendments are no longer needed. As mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, this process allows us to clean up our codes a bit enforce the current standards and maintain safety as a priority. So therefore, excuse me. Staff recommends that City Council open a public hearing, receive public feedback, and waive the first reading and introduction of the amendment, removal of ordinances of the City of Los Banners, Amendment Number 504, Water Heaters Prohibited Locations, and Amendment 507, Water Heater Protection from Damage of the California Plumbing Code 2019 Edition. I'm available for any comments, if you, if you have any, and I thank you for your time.
Any comments from council at this time before I open up the public hearing?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Chief, I just have a, a quick question. We have the older homes in Los Banners, so now that the water heaters have been upgraded for these changes with combustion and such to probably not cause fires like they used to. You've mentioned something also about the revision of the Plumbing Codes. How does that affect these older homes? I'm sure that the newer homes are being built to a different standard in Plumbing Codes. But how does that affect the older homes with the newer water heaters?
Well, with the new water heaters, if you purchase, they have a, they're manufactured differently. They have an enclosed fire, a fire chamber, flame chamber. So that is, that, they no longer can buy the water heaters of the past where the flame was, and the glow was right, wide open to the elements. If there was a gas leak and that, that fuel met, met that, that spark or fire, or flame from the pilot, that caused a lot of different challenges and dangers of fire. So you can no longer buy a water heater that had the hazards that we had in the past. If a water heater fails, it needs to be, and replaced, it needs a permit and gone through the process. Does that answer your question?
Well, I, I understood that. What I don't understand is what do the Plumbing Code revisions, does that have anything to do with? What I don't understand is what do the plumbing code revisions, does that have anything to do with the plumbing inside the walls? Or does this just fall under the plumbing codes?
This is just a, a section within the plumbing code that deals with the installation of water heaters.
All right, thank you.
Doesn't change any of the plumbing, uh, within the residence, other than where that water heater is, uh, located.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, are there any other questions?
Mayor, I have a question or a part two.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones.
Uh, so if I understand this correctly, so if a water heater goes out in an existing house. And it's located in the garage or in an interior closet. We'd have to relocate that new water heater to an external enclosure. That's outside the house in its own closet, is that correct?
In the current, in the current code, in our current amendment, if you were going to replace a water heater. Um, you would, would need to be relocated to the outside, yes.
So if the hot water goes out on a Friday night in the winter and there's infants in the home, the California code says. You have to have hot water within twenty-four hours of being notified. How fast can the city work to get a permit approved?
Um, they can, they, they can go to the process and work with the building department by any means regarding, uh, what they did. Um, our building inspectors are very, um, capable of going out and looking, or even at this point with, with photographs. And, and going through the process of what they did. The, the code also talked about, as I mentioned earlier, regarding the, and I may have misunderstood your question before. Uh, water heaters from the past, they, as long as they meet that requirement over eighteen inches. The new construction, they have to be built on an exterior in, in, in closed closet. But if you had a water heater that was pre-existing of the nineteen seventy-three and you replaced it, as long as that was over the eighteen inches above and it was protected. It was, it was, you could, you could do that, but you would still need to have a permit to have it taken care of. That's part of the building permit process.
Okay, so just to be clear, if one's elevated above eighteen inches inside a garage or inside an interior closet. If we need to change a water heater out, because they just go out, uh, randomly most times. We can replace in that same location, just as long as it's elevated and we don't have to retrofit the plumbing and find an exterior closet to put it in. Yeah, correct?
It would need to be, it would need to be replaced and taken care of, but, uh, it would still need to meet the current code. And that's why we, we stress the importance of, of getting a licensed contractor to, to take care of these, these projects. Um, or, you know, somebody that, that is very familiar with the code to make sure that they meet all the requirements.
Okay, so I wasn't, I wasn't clear on that. So would we be allowed to keep it in the same location if it was built? Like that originally?
Yes.
We would, okay, perfect. I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes it could take a week before we get a contractor out there, a plumber, to relocate it in a different location. So just as long as it's elevated and it was original in a interior closet or inside the garage, we would be able to keep it there.
Yeah. Just as long as. By, by, by changing this back to just the plumbing code and removing our amendments. It allows that to happen more often and allows us to use the, the new water heaters as an example, that they are now safer to use than what was being used in the past.
Okay, no, excellent, thank you.
And that was a good explanation, uh, Mason, and thank you, Brett, for asking those questions. All right, do we have any other comments on, uh, ordinance number one zero eight six? This is the first reading and it's to waive the first reading and introduction. So I have to open the public hearing, but any more comments from council at this time? Okay, I will now open the public hearing and receive comment on ordinance number one zero eight six. And Director Maloney, do we have any comments?
Let me refresh my email. I have no comments.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing, bring it back to council level, and I need two motions. Uh, uh, first one is to waive the first reading and the second one is for the introduction. Who would like to do that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Lewis.
Yes?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading of ordinance number one one eight six as read by title.
Do I have a second?
Uh, Councilmember Johnson Santos, I will second that.
Thank you, it's motion by Lewis, second by Johnson Santos to waive the first reading of ordinance number one zero eight six. And, uh, Santos?
Sorry, this is for the second part of the motion, correct?
It's the first part, uh, waive the first reading.
Oh, sorry, I make a motion to waive the first reading of.
I already did that.
Oh, sorry, excuse me, yes.
I, not, not just say yes, I mean, if you'd like to say yes.
No, I got you, I, I got you, I am saying yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Well, I'll, uh, yes, motion carries to waive the first reading. Now, Mrs. Lewis, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number one one eight six as read by title.
Mr. Santos?
Second.
Okay, motion by Lewis, second by Santos for the introduction of one zero eight six. Uh, Mrs. Santos?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lu- Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
And Valalta, yes, motion carries. Okay, let's go on to item B. To receive public comment and consideration of, uh, conditional use permit number two zero two zero dash zero three. For the allowance of off sale of alcohol through type twenty beer and wine ABC license for the Todd Real Estate Solutions Incorporated. Uh, Arco AMPM located at two zero two seven East Pacheco Boulevard, APN zero eight three one four zero zero three one. And we're gonna go to Community Economic Development Director, uh, Elms for an explanation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I do have a presentation for this item, Sonia, if you can allow me to share my screen. All right. There we go. You should be able to, oh, there you go. All right, so I'm just gonna put play on my PowerPoint. All right, so hopefully you all can see that. Um, so tonight we have, um, a conditional use permit two thousand twenty dash zero three. And this is for, um, a new AMPM Arco Fuel Station for Todd Real Estate Solutions, Inc. A little bit of background on this particular project, the planning commission approved a tentative parcel map. Uh, twenty twenty zero three and site plan twenty twenty zero two on June tenth. And at that same meeting, uh, they recommended approval of conditional use permit number two thousand and twenty dash zero three. For a type twenty alcohol license to allow the off sale of beer and wine at this particular location. The project is located at twenty twenty seven East Pacheco Boulevard. Uh, it's located within the highway commercial zoning district. And its land use designation within the general plan is commercial. This particular property is located within, um, the East Pacheco Plaza, which is more commonly known as the Home Depot Shopping Center. Uh, this parcel in the project site is located immediately east of the Home Depot building. And, um, as you can see within that area, it's high, the parcels, uh, before the, the parcel division is highlighted for you in yellow. Um, after the, um, minor subdivision, the minor split of that parcel. This project would be located on the northern half, um, of the parcel. Uh, access to the project site is from Pacheco Boulevard as well as Place Road. According to CEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, this project, uh, was reviewed, um, and determined. Uh, that the environmental review, uh, with the mitigated negative declaration that was done with the Home Depot Shopping Center was adequate. And this project was consistent with that analysis. The evidence in the project file does support that there are no circumstances or further impacts requiring preparation of a subsequent mitigated negative declaration at this time. Um, and that particular mitigated negative declaration was adopted and approved by the city on May eleventh, two thousand and five. Uh, the use permit analysis that those findings are contained within the staff report. Uh, those are findings for general use permit criteria, um, and then there's specific criteria for the sale of alcohol. And then ABC is the issuing authority of the Alcohol Beverage Control Board of the State of California. Uh, this is the floor and camera plan. Um, I do apologize, it's probably a little hard to see on the screen, but the green highlights are each camera. There will be interior and exterior cameras on this project site. Um, and also just to, to note, this particular property owner, um, is the developer and operator of the Arco AMPM. That we have on the west end of town at fifteen fifty West Pacheco Boulevard, VA. Uh, so they, um, are an interesting business. We have, um, operational personnel from that business and a good working relationship. And, um, there is a condition of approval that requires that the placement of the cameras are to the satisfaction of our police chief. Uh, these are elevations of, although that's not the focus of the night. Um, it highlighted tonight, it's just the conditional use permit for alcohol. Um, I did want to highlight that this is what, um, the proposed building would look like. This is the north and east elevation of the project site, which will also consist of a car wash. And this is the south and west elevation. It does have, um, characteristics and components that are, uh, of the same theme of Home Depot. And then there's just a fuel panel. This is a site photo of the scene site. Uh, as if you were entering from Pacheco Boulevard, right behind El Grande. And this is a picture from the northeast corner. And the southeast corner. Public comment, publicary notice was published in Los Angeles Enterprise, and mailed to three hundred foot radius on Friday, June nineteenth. And as of today's date, no comments have been received. So with that, staff is recommending that the city council adopt resolution six two three three, approving conditional use permit number twenty twenty dash zero three. To allow for the sale of alcohol under a type twenty off sale beer and wine license for Todd Real Estate Solutions. Doing business as Arco AMPM to be located at twenty twenty seven East Pacheco Boulevard. And that concludes my presentation, be happy to answer any questions.
All right, council members, are there any questions at this time? Okay, now hearing ended, I will now go to the public hearing. On City Council Resolution number sixteen three three, approving the conditional use permit number two zero two zero dash zero three. Uh, to allow for the off sale of beer and wine. Under the type twenty alcohol license for Todd Real Estate Solutions Incorporated. Arco AMPM located at twenty twenty seven East Pacheco Boulevard, APN zero eight three one four zero zero three one. Uh, are there any comments from the public? Director Maloney?
I received no comments.
Thank you. I will now close the public hearing and bring it back to council level. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, allow me to make a motion to this council member Jones?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, yes, I'd like to, uh, bring City Council Resolution, signature number six two three three, as I submitted.
Okay, do I have a second?
Um, Mayor, I will second that motion, um, and also with the comment, I'm happy to see that that area is going to be filled in and look nice up there. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I call for the vote, I just wanted to tell the Todd brothers that, uh, we're working with Caltrans for channelizers. Uh, in that area for the direction of traffic, uh, so people can't be cutting in and out. And it's gonna be a lot safer for the flow of traffic, uh, through, uh, through that area. It's gonna be on the east side of town or also on the west side of town. Uh, we're gonna be working with Caltrans so they can install the, uh, the channelizer, so people can't be just, you know, turning a wheel. And that way the flow of traffic will be a lot better for us. Okay, uh, so I have a motion by, uh, Jones and seconded by Johnson Santos. And roll call vote, uh, Santos? Mr. Santos?
Sorry, my mic was not, yes.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Valalta, yes, motion carries. Congratulations, Todd brothers, and, uh, get it done quickly. Okay, let's go on to item eight, consideration adoption of City Council Resolution number six two three four. Approving professional services agreement for municipal code enforcement. Uh, services, CSG Consultants Incorporated, and amending two oh, uh, two oh, uh, dash, two oh two one. Fiscal year budget as it pertains to revenues and expenditures in the community development block grant, CDBG fund. And we're gonna go to Director Elms for this.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So I don't have a PowerPoint presentation for this item, I just wanted to keep it pretty brief and actually just a status update on where we are with this particular project. Um, so last, um, week, we received, um, our standard contract from the state of California. The Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, which allows us to move forward with this particular project. Uh, we were awarded this grant back in August of two thousand and nineteen. Um, and then subsequently after that award, we went out for a request for proposal. To receive, um, this on, uh, oh, for a contract for this particular service for code enforcement. Under the parameters of this particular grant. Um, and so we held interviews, um, after receiving two proposals. We selected, um, a consultant and, um, we've been waiting since that time. Um, for our standard contract from the state of California. So we were excited, uh, to finally receive it and to be able to move forward. Um, so with that, uh, we are asking the council, um, to authorize the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with CSG consultants. Um, there is a, um, budget, um, amendment for this particular item. For the revenue and expenditure of this particular grant program. Um, I did want to share with you, just as a refresher, and I'm just gonna share my screen very quickly. Of where the boundary of this particular service is to be located. So it's within the red area, those are specific census tracts, um, within the city. And so code enforcement services, we would be contracted with CSG to provide this service within the boundary area. Um, we are required per the grant guidelines to uphold, um, to these particular distances tracks in these block groups. Um, if we provide service with that consultant outside, um, we would be infringement of our standard contract agreement and, um, could lose our funding. So it's very important that, um, we keep that in mind. Um, but we have, um, attached for you the professional service agreement. Um, and so we are asking for the city council to authorize the city manager to execute that agreement and for us to move forward. Any questions?
Okay, thank you, council members, any questions? Okay, we have a lot of, Mrs. Lewis?
Thank you. And Stacy, I have a, a few questions, um. It looks like, uh, in the report, um, it gives the grant amount to be spent of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one. Um, but it looks like we're gonna be receiving roughly about five hundred thousand, so I didn't see any other years mentioned in the report. How, how is?
Yeah, good question, so the grant is for three years. Technically, the grant period started May fifteenth and it will expire May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. So for each fiscal year, we're anticipating about, um, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So for each fiscal year, we're anticipating about um 168,000.
Okay.
And that's based on a professional service agreement that has a cap, a maximum cap of 14,000 each month for their services, CSG.
Okay, and uh, let's see here. Uh, in the report, I saw where there was uh referencing to, I think it was our personnel staffing. I'm not sure if it's our staffing or their staffing of code enforcement managers, senior code enforcement officer, uh, officer one and two. Um, is that, how many, how many, where are we going to get one person for this grant, right?
Right, one physical person, but CSG, we also get their their management and and their expertise and skill. So that person is um an independent, um, so they're contracted through a third party, but they have a manager that they answer to, and we still get the benefit of having um that skill that physically we'll only see one officer here, but we still get the back office benefit.
Okay. Um, and I saw the scope of services that um um is is going to be offered to the city of Los Angeles. Uh, number 12 says providing regular ongoing customer services and other technical training for code enforcement officers. Would they be providing additional training to our code enforcement unit? Is that what they're going to be doing as well?
No, that's for their office officers, they provide that training. On I saw on an ongoing basis, so they're.
Our our staff will be providing their that one officer training for the job to be done here.
Right, our code and making sure that they understand um our requirements and regulations here.
Okay. Um, excuse me, on page seven, under records and access uh to records, it looks like it's their responsibility to keep records uh for three years after the contract expires um and that we have access to those records. So we're not going to be keeping any physical records at all uh in the city of Los Angeles of what that particular code enforcement officer will be doing?
Oh, Gary, I'm sure he can jump on and probably answer um those day to day. Uh, but in terms of the casework, uh, that is entered into our log um so that we have that case management. Um, but um in terms of logs of where they were providing services, um, you know, which cases they had, they do need to maintain record of that, and that's during the 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 grant guidelines so that if the state ever audited us, we'd be able to provide that record.
Okay.
Gary, did I answer that?
Um, yeah, I I guess when I was reading it, I understood it to be that they would be keeping the fiscal records at their company rather than, you know, the city of Los Angeles having them. And and you would have access to those records uh up to three years after the program was finished. So I just assumed by that language that we wouldn't have those records on site here. They would be keep, they would be the keepers of the records.
We have our own system. They they too use Grainview, that's also what our building department uses um for their cases. But they actually, and Gary, jump in here, they actually have to input in both systems, both in the city of Los Manizas system as well as their own system um that they have for case management. Um, so we will always have that record, and but they are to maintain their records, uh, you know, invoicing records. So this is, this is much more than just um, you know, a code enforcement case. This is anything to do with this grant period. Um, they do have to keep those records in case of uh the city having an audit. We need to provide those records. That's why we're requiring them to maintain them for three years after um our our contract is over.
Okay. Uh, Chief, did you have any additional comments on that?
Yes, council member, thank you for the question. Um, in regards to CSG's work with their own personal record records management system, it's called Grainview, it's actually a very good system. We worked with them on last uh go around with our grant. They will be required to enter that data into their system as an ongoing log and case review file for our purposes of our grant and the purposes of the retention of this information for the three-year period after this. There's also going to be a little bit of a duplicative effort in the fact that we are going to want to have and capture some of the basics of the code enforcement information that they're doing so that we can provide that as a public information uh document to you all or to the public in general. So there'll be a little bit of a duplicate, a duplication, like I said, but it's it's nothing that we can't overcome. It's it's not going to be a real drain on our resources otherwise. We did it last time and it worked out just fine.
Okay. Now, and and my last question, which is probably more of a comment, I I know that we had a um, I won't say glitches, but a learning curve uh the first time we had the contract. Um, and and I I guess I'm I'm really hoping that uh and I know that code enforcement is a real priority for this council, um, that this whole process is going to run a lot smoother, especially in the area uh that's been designated, which is, you know, the same area that we had before. Um, and and I know that um, you know, there are probably some things that still need to be cleaned up in those areas and also just the fact that it frees our regular staff up to be able to hit hard other areas in the city that are not in the designated area. So um, that that's just a comment that I have, is that um, I'm I'm sure, Chief, that that uh that you've got your points that you want to make with this organization uh to make the operation run even more smoothly um than what we had our first go around with the contract.
Yes, council member, thank you. The uh, we're really excited actually bringing CSG on for nothing more than uh the increase in the uh resources that is given available to the public. But also, you mentioned that we do want to do a better job, and I think we're excited about that part. Because we've been down this road before, the upstarting of the program and getting it out to ground and running. It's going to be much quicker, much more efficient, much much more fluid than it was last time. I'm not even really worried about getting the program running. We're familiar with the staff at CSG, uh, we're comfortable with them, we trust them, and we should be able to get it to ground running. Already got a desk, we already got a bunch of the equipment uh established for them, and we're ready to go.
So how how soon will this employee start?
So it depends on the finalization of the grant. There are a couple steps between now and that grant being finalized. That it may take a week or two from today, but uh it's not going to be as long as it was last time. I think last time we ran into a couple hurdles that slowed us down. Want to say over thirty days, but that's not going to happen this time. Unless, the only tag out would be if CSG um has a commitment that they have with their code enforcement officer that they're going to sign with. To us, there might be a um a bit of a lopsided, but I don't I don't anticipate that happening. And like we did last time, extended all of the CSG or the CDPG funding. And that's um, and I I am fully anticipating we're going to get our every benefit of that in this in this grant period as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Good, um, kind of take off what Gary was just saying about there's a couple more steps. The next step after the city manager is authorized to to sign the professional service agreement. Um, so currently, right now, the standard agreement, the standard contract uh is with HCD, the Department of Housing and Community Development. We're waiting for their signatures to sign that contract and for the contract to be executed as well. So there's a timing that we have to wait um for the state and those signatures. Uh, and then hopefully, that's why you're coming before you now so that our PSA is ready to rock and roll as soon as we get um the final executed version of the standard agreement.
Okay, any other comments from council? All right, so do I have a motion for the approval of uh Resolution, City Council Resolution 6234?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Council Member Louis. Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 6234 as read by title.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Mayor, Johnson Santos.
Okay, it's been motion by Louis, seconded by Johnson Santos to approve City Council Resolution Number 6234. And Santos?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Louis?
Yes.
Alalta, yes, motion carries. Okay, item number nine, COVID-19 status update. Uh, City Manager Terazus, Alex?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Sonya, if you could just take us quickly or just to that dashboard. Uh, I just wanted to to start uh my my update with just reviewing uh the county's dashboard and some of the the case numbers. Uh, so on the screen, you'll see uh the data dashboard, uh, the COVID-19 data dashboard uh maintained by the County of Merced. Um, you'll see we've got uh 1,131 confirmed cases, uh, a positive uh case percentage of 7.67%. Uh, 99 individuals have been hospitalized. Um, and unfortunately, there have been uh 11 deaths reported uh related to COVID-19. Um, I think the cursor on the screen that Sonya is projecting uh shows Los Angeles as 115 cases. Uh, these numbers are from, or that number is from June 29th. So I think there are a couple days worth of cases that are not reported here. Uh, but just to go real quickly through the other area numbers, uh, Atwater has 134. Uh, Delhi, the unincorporated, unincorporated community of Delhi has 58. Uh, Gustine is at 10 reported cases. Uh, Livingston is 64. Uh, again, Los Angeles at 115. Um, Merced, City of at 433. Uh, Winton, again, an unincorporated community of Winton, 68. Uh, Hailmar, 6. Uh, you'll see also Dostalos at 6. Um, and then the combined community is a grand planada at 18. So that's just a quick overview of the number of cases. Again, there's only a, there's a couple days missing uh under these reported cases, but uh this dashboard is maintained by the County of Merced. Uh, it's a good resource uh for the community to check if they're if they're interested in in monitoring uh active cases. Uh, we do have a new test site uh open in the city of Los Angeles, uh operating Monday, Wednesday, Friday at the community center. Um, and that testing center is a partnership between, uh, thank you, Sonya, uh, between Merced County, Department of Public Health, uh, Golden Valley Health Centers, uh, and the city of Los Angeles. They are providing, uh, the community center as that testing location. Uh, they do have a mobile vehicle that they're using to coordinate the testing. Um, and if individuals are interested in scheduling an appointment, although I am told by the fire chief, uh, the testing is booked through the end of next week. Um, and they are conducting about 70 tests a day. Um, and they were at capacity today of about 80 tests. Uh, but uh if folks are interested in scheduling an appointment, uh, they can call Golden Valley Health Center at 866-682-4842. Again, if uh someone would like to schedule a test, uh, that number to call is 866-682-4842. Um, so that's uh number cases, uh, new testing center here in the city. Um, and do also want to briefly talk about uh the governor's announcement this afternoon. Uh, the governor did um issue an additional order uh for actually the, as he's been describing it, uh, of changing the dimmer on the switch to reopen California. Uh, actually, uh, making it, uh, tony down the opening. So the governor has uh ordered uh that there be closing of indoor dining, uh, indoor wineries and tasting rooms, uh, indoor family entertainment centers, indoor movie theaters, theaters, sorry, indoor zoos and museums, and indoor card rooms. Uh, so those closures um uh by order of the governor are to occur in counties that are on the monitoring list. Uh, currently, there are 19 counties uh on the state's monitoring list, and uh Merced County is one of those counties on the monitoring list. Uh, so according to that order uh placed by the governor, uh, those establishments uh are to are to close. Um, I think that's all I have today, uh, Mayor. Again, good news about the testing center and that testing being available here in Los Angeles at the community center. Uh, if folks are interested in monitoring data, uh, we recommend they go to that county dashboard. Um, and that's available at the Merced County website. Um, and uh, just again, to reiterate the governor's announcement of those uh closures of those businesses uh that had been open, or at least the indoor portion of those businesses that had been opened um in the county and in the state. So um, that's really all I have this afternoon, Mayor. Um, and I'm available for questions uh from the council.
Oh, why don't we have Director Maloney read the letter related to COVID-19?
Oh, thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor and council members, at the last council meeting, you voted to eliminate the masking ordinance. Within days, the state government instituted a masking mandate that must be locally enforced. Since then, our local COVID-19 case count has increased. The positivity testing rate continues to grow. Lives have been lost, and our local ICU capacity is at risk of being stretched thin. Our county has also been placed on the state watch list. And today was announced that we will be required to roll back on reopening. I keep hearing that reasonable people will do what is best, but I don't see our community members maintaining an semblance of social distancing or wearing a mask. I ask that you serve your leadership role by demonstrating the use of masks in social distancing and reinstitute the masking order with enforcement. I believe it is beyond time for our community to take forceful steps to to contain the spread of this virus. Thank you, Tricia Campos.
Okay, well, I can I can answer, Mrs. Campos, is that the uh, the uh, the mask order is in place. It's in place for every city in the state of California. And uh, and when I'm out and about, I I have to tell you that that people are wearing the masks. And and they are adhering to the the state order, and so are the businesses. Uh, so that's good news. Uh, I have a report from Dr. Yu, and he is the hospital administrator. And uh, at the time he had uh, he he contacted me, he said, yes, we are seeing an increase. Due to Los Manizas' strict measures, it it was blunted and delayed further as we rest, uh, as the rest of the county and state exploded. So what he's trying to say is, it says, Los Angeles took a stay on this early on, and we uh, we actually gave the hospital uh a number of days to prepare, and they have the facilities that they need, and they're not overpacked at this time. They're actually, he goes on to read, but we are now seeing the marked increase in the last seven days. We've been trying to help other hospitals and counties out uh as well with cases. We are not at, and I repeat, we are not at the breaking point, but the rest of the state is coming right on the limit. I asked Chief Hurley to get our EOC calls back online soon, and we're still standing ready at Memorial Hospital, Los Angeles. So what Los Angeles did early on really helped. And and now that the governor has taken over. And, and now that the Governor has taken over the banner, which is fantastic, and required the masks, it, it made it, uh, a lot more serious because, uh, yes, I don't think people were taking it seriously, uh, because Los Banos and Livingston were the only ones who required the masks. And Livingston as well rolled it back to the county orders, strongly recommended. But then that very next day, uh, the state instituted the mask order. So I'm glad to see that there's a common thread here throughout the state of California. But Los Banos did the right thing, and we delayed the spread so the hospital could, uh, it could, uh, again, uh, have the supplies and to take care. And as Dr. Yu said, we are, we are, uh, uh, we are helping out other hospitals in the state. And, uh, but, uh, Los Banos did the right thing, and so did Livingston. So, uh, I just wanted to give a shout out to them for, for what they've done. Uh, but, uh, that's the report I have on COVID-19. And so, council members, do you have any questions, uh, of this, of Alex?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I have, Alex, I had a question. I know at the last meeting, um, and I just didn't email a little bit, um, a few of our residents had questions about, um, how we are communicating with them. And, um, that they would like some more communication from us at the council and city. Um, I was wondering, I know you mentioned that we can definitely go into the Muscat County dashboard. I guess it looks pretty good. But, um, I wonder how we, I mean, I imagine we're probably the ones that make it out. How are we promoting, uh, this information so that residents are able to see this clearly?
Uh, thank, thank you, council member. So, uh, uh, early on, as, as we, you know, began the public outreach effort regarding, um, COVID-19, uh, we, we looked for the best way we thought to push information out to the community. Um, and where we landed was, uh, uh, on an existing social media platform, which is the Police Department's Facebook page. Uh, we were, we were looking for, uh, a way to get information out to the community quickly, um, on an established platform that we didn't, that we, that we didn't need to create. Um, and the PD Facebook page has a large following. It was established, it was there, it was ready to go. So that was how we felt was the best platform. We didn't think that creating a new platform where folks would have to, to, to like it, join it, get, get on it, uh, would be the quickest way to get that information out to the community. Um, we, we were, we were in a little reactionary mode initially, so that was what we thought was the best way to push the information out. We're continuing to use that, uh, PD Facebook page to communicate with the community. Um, I think we will continue to do it that way. Uh, we're also pushing out information via the other city, city, uh, social media platforms. But given that PD Facebook page was there, it had a large following, that's where we thought the best bang for the buck was.
Gotcha. Um, my, uh, sorry, oh, I guess that some of the residents feel that the page, and that's not to take anything from the PD, uh, Facebook page, but they feel as though, um, they're bombarded with a lot of different PD information and also COVID information. So some of them feel as though, um, there's should be a separate tab and a set for strictly, you know, Los Banos, City of Los Banos, um, COVID information and, um, PD information. Is there, um, any way we can, is, is there any way we can go about clearing that up a little bit, or?
Uh, I mean, I, it, again, we, we thought that existing avenue with that large number of followers would be, would be an efficient, effective way. Is, is there other, is there other, are there other postings? Yes, but again, just in the interest of not having to duplicate, um, not having to create additional, you know, demands on, you know, very limited staff resources, uh, we thought that was the best approach.
Okay. Um, what I'm hoping is, as we have been this course in time, perhaps there'll be some way, and I completely understand how we went about this, and I agree, I agree with this as well. But, um, if there's some way we can kind of clear it up for the patients, because there's been several comments as to how, um, I guess some of the COVID information gets lost between PD information. And, um, so I don't know if there's some way we could talk about maybe hoping to clear that up for people in the future. Because you're, I think you're completely right, how we were going about it, that the fact that we already have so many followers to the PD page, that's where people are gravity, and a lot have, which is where they're finding information. But hopefully to, um, clear the information so that it's, uh, one into, two into two within one. So I don't know how that would work, to be honest with you. But I just don't know if there were many comments about that mix up of information as it goes. So is there some way we could maybe look into that, or maybe perhaps looking to how we can, um, separate that information? I would be grateful.
Uh, sure, we could certainly look into that.
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Is there a way to create two tabs within that one, uh, um, one posting? One for COVID and one for regular police, uh, activities?
Uh, I mean, I, I did, I'm, I'm not enough of a social media expert to be able to comment on how that might be organized or complex. I think what I, what I came to is looking, us looking into a way to create a one-stop spot for future COVID information. Whether or not that's the Facebook page, or we just are pushing, uh, pushing folks to the city's website. Um, and, and pull, pull, pull back from the Facebook page and go to the city's website. Um, but, I mean, I caution that if we do that, there will be some folks who miss it. So, it, it, because we, we make that change. Um, I mean, but we will certainly look into, uh, opportunities to, uh, improve that communication with the community.
Okay, well, maybe with all the, uh, uh, contacts with, with the council members and, uh, the, uh, the social media, if we decide to do that, I don't know if there's a way to do a split screen on the PD Facebook page, one for COVID, and then they could click on that if they want the COVID information, or they could, uh, uh, click on, uh, regular police activities. Uh, I don't know, uh, enough about it to see if that could be created or not. I think I've seen it before. Uh, but if that's not able to be done, maybe then we create the COVID-19 with all the posts and go to one site for that and just push everybody, uh, and it'll be awkward for a time, but, uh, but maybe that's what we do.
Sure, well, well, we'll look.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Santos, good comment. Okay, uh, any other comments on, uh, COVID-19 status update? Okay, let's go on to item ten, advisement of public notices. You want to report, uh, Director, oh, Matty. Uh, that's right, Director Elms.
Uh, okay, Mr. Mayor. I, I think Louis was trying to jump in there.
Yeah, I, I saw, I saw Councilmember Jones's mic on, so I, I didn't know if he had a question, so I was delaying. Uh, also, before we move forward, um, there are two other callers with their mics on, and there's a lot of feedback going on as I'm listening. So, uh, whoever caller number three and number two are, if you can mute, mute your mics, uh, please do so, so that we can continue our meeting without your feedback.
One of the microphones, Mrs. Lewis, is, uh, the microphone here in the council chambers, which allows for us to be live on YouTube. So that's caller number two. I can go ahead and mute caller number three.
All right, thank you. Um, in regards to, uh, well, just one comment, uh, on the, the webpage. I know that cities, when I go to look at their COVID webpage on the city site, uh, there's a, a particular site just right there on the front of the page that leads them directly to any information regarding the COVID virus, rather than having to go to the police site or Facebook or anything like that. So I don't know if that's something that would take too long for us to develop, but to put it right there on the front page, everybody go to the website and get the information, would eliminate that kind of confusion. Um, the other question I had is on the testing at our community center. Um, and anyone go to be tested, whether they're asymptomatic or not? And is there a cost to get the test done?
Uh, if I, Chief Hurley, jump in and rest me if I, if I, if I, if I misspeak. But, uh, anyone can, can attend to be tested. Uh, you just need to make an appointment. Um, and I, I, I don't, I, anyone can be tested. If you have symptoms, I don't know if they're encouraging you to go be tested at that site. Um, but, um, anyone, anyone can be tested at this site.
Basically, you're not sure of the cost, if there's a cost.
Send, uh, information on the cost?
The cost, uh, they run through the insurance and they have, they have means too, so they will not turn anybody around, anyone away without being, being tested.
Okay, thank you.
And that is the same, that is the same information that I've received, Mrs. Lewis, that if someone has insurance, uh, they will try to recoup some costs on the insurance. But if they don't have insurance and they have a fund, so someone isn't turned away.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis.
Okay, uh, are we okay to go to item ten now, advisement of public notices? Director Elms?
Okay. So we have one item. Uh, it is a public hearing for best intended map and a final development plan is for Mission Village South, thirty-five C. Um, this is to be located within the Mission Village South area, um, which is just east of Mercy Springs Road and south of Mission Drive and north of Wilmot Road, uh, Wilmot Avenue. So, um, this particular item is proposing forty medium density residential lots and, um, sixteen multifamily units on seven point eight-one acres. Um, the public hearing is scheduled for July eighth at four P M. And, um, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions from council? All right, let's go on to item eleven, City Manager's report. Uh, Alex?
Uh, no, nothing today, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to item twelve, report update on Merced County Association of Governors, MCAG and Measure V Committee. Um, I, I have three items to, to talk about today. And, uh, we are moving forward with land acquisition, uh, for the expansion of the Billy Wright site. So that's, that's great, because, uh, it needs a tremendous amount for Gustine, Dostalos, and Los Banos to secure a waste disposal site. And as I say, it's not a, uh, it's not a, a pretty agenda item. It is not a, an agenda item that, uh, that would, uh, draw cheers, but it will draw jeers if we don't have a waste site, because it's going to cost us a fortune to transport to the fifty-nine site. And so this is for the future of Los Banos. And, uh, uh, we mentioned at the last meeting, uh, uh, Director Patient Mark had mentioned that the, the C-MAC money, we received nine hundred thousand dollars for the signalization of one fifty-two, which is a big deal. And, uh, then we're working on channelizers on the east and west side, and we're working on intersection improvements on one fifty-two. So this is going to be a big deal when it's completed, uh, because by twenty-twenty-one, and it will, uh, it, it will help us to, for the flow of traffic through the City of Los Banos at a, at a greater rate. And the last one, um, we're going to be bringing to council more information. It was, uh, made known to us that, uh, this, uh, MCAG would like to extend, uh, with Republic Services, a recycling contract. And for the, uh, the cities that are doing recycling, which are Merced, the City of Merced, the City of Los Banos, and parts of the county. And those are the only ones that are doing recycling within the county. And then they call something called Dirty Recycling, where it is what it means is that people recycle in bins, uh, if, if they want to. But Los Banos has a blue can, Merced has a blue can, and parts of the county have a blue can. Well, the recycling cost has gone up tremendously. And I don't agree with those costs. I don't agree with the, uh, uh, the way it's being presented. And so I want the council input. And I will be, be bringing you that information as I have more information. They were going to, they meaning MCAG, they were going to approve this, uh, this two-year extension at the July meeting. But now they're not going to do that, they're going to give a presentation. And as soon as we get that presentation, I will bring it to council, and then you will have the information that I have. So everyone will have the, uh, the correct, uh, uh, correct agenda, uh, info and, and what we need to talk to our residents about, what I need to talk to the council members about. So that's all I have for, uh, item twelve. And, uh, if there are any questions this time? Okay, let's go on to item thirteen, City Council Member Reports. And tonight, we'll start with Mr. Jones.
No reports, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, and Mrs. Lewis.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have, uh, one item I'd like to discuss. Um, I was, uh, traveling downtown this, this past week, and, um, I was stopped at the stop sign on the corner of I and, and Fifth. And I believe it's the Gardner Building, or maybe it's the one next to it. I don't know if it's all one and the same. But, um, I noticed that the lower floors were all, windows were all boarded up. Um, that, I, I, I guess I'm, what I'm trying to say is I'm beginning to get a bit frustrated because, um, this building has been sitting on this corner, not making any progress for several years. Uh, and it's getting worse and worse. Um, we had another unit just a little bit further down that, uh, the upstairs apartments all caught on fire. I don't know what's going on with that as far as whether that building has been updated. You know, what's going on with, um, uh, whether or not they've met the codes for that building. And it's been about, uh, a year now that we met with an organization that was supposed to come up with some new, uh, res- resolutions, uh, to help us upgrade our downtown. And things seem to be stale. I, I kind of, I've been talking about this for the last four years. And I don't think it should take four years for us to be moving forward, uh, to come up with new ideas about how we should move forward with our downtown, uh, what the expectation is as to how it should look for the future. I, I think it's just time for us to, to get busy and get that going. Um, the Downtown Association is working with the merchants and done some improvements on I Street. Uh, Tom Faria calls, uh, uh, I mean, they, they've done improvements on Sixth Street. Tom, uh, Councilman Tom Faria calls I Street the Tenderloin. Um, there's, there's not anything going on down there to improve anything. And, and I don't see anything that's come before us or being proposed to us to start, uh, setting things in place so that when the opportunity comes for businesses, uh, if they sell out or what have you, we'll make those changes. The only really good thing that's going on down there right now is the theaters being upgraded, and somebody purchased that and is diligently working to, to make that a, uh, a, a center point on I Street there, to make it look nice, to, uh, bring something new to our community. And we as a council needs to make an effort to make sure that the rest of our downtown is doing the same thing. I, I don't want to see us look like this twenty years from now, ten years from now, even five years from now. We need to start doing something now to make those changes effective. And if, if we don't change our ordinances, our codes, our resolutions, whatever it is that we need to do to start making these upgrades for our downtown, then it's just going to be the same here going forward. And, and I'm, I'm just expressing my frustration because for the past four years, I've been talking about this, and I don't see anything happen. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, well, uh, I have to tell you that, uh, that I, I spoke to, uh, uh, the Director Elms this week, uh, about the same subject. And I asked for a report because I consider the old Gardner Building a blighted property. And that man purchased that, uh, with the intent to fix it up, and that hasn't happened. And then maybe, so, uh, I'm asking, and Mrs. Lewis with your consent, that we, uh, get a report. a report on, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the apartments that burned, and a progress report, and also on the Gardner Building and anything else, uh, uh, within that area to find out what's been upgraded and what is, what is stagnant, and what we need to do to get this going now.
And, and I don't, I don't mind a, a, a report, but, um, we can't continue to drag our feet on stuff like that. You know, we packed two houses across the street from the courthouse that ended up being demolished because they didn't meet standards. Now, whether somebody, if somebody purchases a building, I assume they are purchasing with the intent of doing something with it. I, I don't assume they're purchasing it with the intent to sit on it for some financial reason or what, what may. Um, and it's, it's, it's not our concern whether they do that or not. Our concern is, when you buy this building, it needs to be upgraded, and there needs to be some deadline set as to when this is going to be done. And we've been, um, I would assume, very kind and working with this particular property owner. Uh, the other one where the apartments burned down, again, I don't know what's happening there, because I, I haven't heard the updates. So I think it's time for us to move. It, it's time for us to get busy and make things happen for our downtown. Cause it-
I, I couldn't agree with you more. Let's, uh, uh, Director Elms, could we schedule a report for the first meeting in August? And, uh, and then, uh, come up with some solutions of, of what this council can do under the court ordinances to, uh, uh, to, uh, uh, you make this, make this work, because that guy's not moving.
Mr. Mayor, we'll, we'll schedule a presentation and, and an update on those properties. Um, and I think what we could also bring back is, uh, uh, some recommendations regarding the implementation of that downtown strategic plan, uh, that we went through the process of developing. So, um, uh, twofold, before we get too far into actual discussion on the agenda item, um, the non-agendized item, um, what, what, what I would suggest is we bring back a report on those, on those buildings, maybe we expand it to other vacant buildings in the downtown, um, and we come back with an update, uh, on an implementation plan or a recommended implementation plan for that downtown strategic plan. If that, if that's okay with, with you as the council, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, and, and then what can we do under our current ordinances?
Uh, sure, I do, sure, we can do that as well. I think we're getting a little far off in, in, far off here, but, um, let us come back to you as the council with something.
Okay, Mrs. Lewis, you okay?
I'm okay with that, so I'll be with you when I come forward.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, anything else, Mrs. Lewis?
Uh, nothing, that's it. Uh, just want to, uh, wish everybody a happy Fourth of July, and please, everyone, please, 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 do not set off illegal fireworks. Uh, there's a hefty fine for doing so, and, um, you know, I, I've heard them in my neighborhood, um, and I, I hear people's, uh, residents, their animals are going crazy. I think we've already suggested for people to get their dogs chipped in case they get lost and, and, uh, end up at a shelter. But, um, please, just be considerate, purchase your safe and sane fireworks from the various booths that we have in Los Banos, and don't set off those fireworks in our community. Um, uh, there's still a lot of dry brush around, and the winds can pick up and start carrying, and then we can end up in trouble. Thank you, that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mrs. Lewis. Okay, uh, let's, let's see, Mr. Faria's not here, Mrs. Santos?
Um, I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, please be safe. Um, but that's all I have today, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, and I'll echo that with a happy Fourth of July, a safe Fourth of July, and, uh, uh, wear your masks. Uh, the cases are growing, uh, we wanted, the mask doesn't protect you, it protects someone else, and the mask that someone else wore, wears protects you, and it just cuts down the chances of, uh, of getting COVID-19, and we all need to do our part, so please help out. So with that-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, did, did you, did you, what about Mr. Jones?
Oh, did I, 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 he was not first on the list.
Oh, he was?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that.
Yes, he was first on the list. Okay? So, um, uh, if there are no other comments, I will, let's see, do we have anything else to adjourn to? No? Okay, so if there are no other comments, I will adjourn this, uh, meeting of July 1st of the city council at 5:34 PM. Good night, everyone, and thank you for attending.